The Oxford Public Schools School Committee Special Meeting of Monday, October 17th, 2022. The meeting is being videotaped by Oxford Cable Access and broadcast live on the town's Public Access Educational Channel 194, cable channel 194, which is also streamed live on the cable access webpage on the Town of Oxford website. The video recording may be viewed subsequent to the live broadcast via the town's YouTube channel, which may be accessed by a link from either the Town of Oxford website or the Oxford Public Schools website. Thank you. So we will call the meeting to order. We do have a special presentation tonight. We have Tracy Nowick from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. She's going to give us a presentation tonight on finance and also the role of the school committee. So without further ado, I will turn it over to Tracy. Thank you, Tracy, and welcome.
Thank you for having me. It's good to be with you again. So as was mentioned, my name is Tracy Nowick, and I'm a field director for MASC. I'm the field director for Central Massachusetts, so right down the road here, I actually live in Worcester. And tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about your roles, which is, I know, a refresher for all of you in terms of the balance of what is your job versus what's the job of the superintendent and the administration, and then talk at greater length about finance, and in particular about Oxford's relationship with the state funding system, which, as I think a couple of you know, is something that I specialize in. So I always like to ground any conversations around school committee roles around the state code of ethics, which is something that the school committees across Massachusetts all hold in common. And in contrast, I always think in terms to how we frequently talk about or think about school committee, or either even just sort of generally elected office, we talk a lot about responsibility to constituents and to our constituencies. We don't necessarily always talk about the other relationships that school committee members are responsible for. And the code of ethics in the state actually sees the role of the school committee within three realms. Certainly with the relationship that school committee members have with the community, but also with the relationship that school committee members have with the administration, and also have with their fellow school committee members. And the entire code of ethics actually walks through those relationships in some depth in terms of what are the responsibilities that you hold, again, not only to your constituencies and to the larger community, but also what are the relations, what is the responsibility that you as an individual member have to your administration and to the administrators, and also to your fellow members? And some of that is about things like making sure that you stay informed and you stay up to date, making sure that you actually keep the work of the school committee within the public meetings, making sure that you serve as a good sort of conduit for information between the administration and the larger community, and also in the other direction, but not bringing things to the floor unless there really isn't effectively another option, and ensuring that your committee members, you work together as a team, you work together with the administration as a governance body, and that, you know, decisions that are made here are decisions that are made here, and that whether or not you support them at the time of the deliberation and the vote, you then are faithful to working to carry them forward and work them out. So in terms of the relationship that you have as a member of the school committee or as a school committee body with the administration and with the superintendent, I always like to sort of give you this image because I think that it encompasses a significant number of the ways in which we think about the work of the committee versus the work of the administration. And I do want to note, and I'll say this more than once, that you're going to see that the overlap here is about trust and respect, because not infrequently, when we have a conversation with a committee member who calls us in the office and says, is this my job, or is this the superintendent's job? What am I supposed to do with this? When it gets blurry, or when it gets complicated, at the end of the day, there really is no replacement for having a relationship that is a strong professional working relationship based on trust with the superintendent. And that's true of each of you as individuals, but it's also true of you as a committee. And that's something that, once it's lost, is hard to replace, but I really can't emphasize enough that that is something that really is within the realm of the school committee to be continuing to work on and to see as really honestly part of your job, is to both create, sustain, and ensure that that's actually an ongoing relationship. Then in terms of realms, the school committee is really the governance. I heard a school business administrator present at the national conference a couple of weeks ago. He talked about school committees as looking up and out, and I think that that's a good way of thinking about school committees. We talk about sort of, you know, the 30,000-foot vision, or whatever, however you'd like to put it, but that day-to-day management is that sort of looking down, looking a little bit ahead, certainly, but looking down, is the work of the superintendent, the work of the administration. That looking up and out and making sure that there's a direction that the district is headed in is the work of the school committee together as a governance body. The school committee is going to be focusing on the results, the end. Where are you going? What's the mission? What's the vision? What are the goals? Obviously, you know, that's part of your core responsibility, right there in chapter 71, as is the establishment of policy. The superintendent, meanwhile, is the means, looking at how you're getting there, the method, the action plans, regulations, procedures. And I do want to note, of course, the budget falls under the school committee's realm. It does get proposed by the administration, and then the day-to-day actual expenditure of it is done by the administration, but there is, of course, a back and forth there. And you'll see, as we go down here, there's a couple of places where there's really a back and forth between the administration and the school committee. We like to give a sort of a test, if the answer to the question, if the question is a what, a why, or a how much, it's usually, usually, the realm of the school committee. If it's a how, who, when, or where, it's usually, usually, the realm of the administration. And you'll notice that there, there's sort of a very concrete set of things that fall under the purview of the superintendent and the administration, with the exception of the budget, which, of course, falls under the school committee, at least at the cost center level. There are, as in many cases, some places where there's flexibility or there's going to be overlap. This is not a perfect example, but there are, but in most cases, those can be sort of good tests. In terms of which direction you're bridging in, the administration, appropriately, the superintendent acts as the bridge between the staff and the school committee, bringing those things forward to the committee meeting. And then on the other side, the committee is bringing the community voices, the community, your ear in the community, to the table, to the superintendent. And the bottom here, I always like to sort of think of as really that sort of handoff and that back and forth. Much of what you do as a school committee is going to start with the administration with a recommendation from the superintendent. It's true of budget, generally true of goals, not infrequently true of policy, sometimes it happens there. That then gets authorized. There's a deliberation and a vote by the school committee. That then gets handed back over to administration for implementation, true of the budget, true of policy, true of goals. And then it's up to the school committee to have monitoring over the course of the year, certainly true of what you do with budget, but it's also what's going to happen with implementation of policy, it's what's going to happen with implementation of goals. And then, of course, it goes back around again, when you need a new set of goals, when you need a new set of policies, when it's time for the budget again, you're getting a new recommendation that's based, one hopes, on the monitoring that you've been doing over the course of the year, before it comes back around to you again for your, for your part in that. And then note, really, that if this is working as it should, that's really where the community trust in the schools come from. It was, someone once said to me something that actually made me stop short as a school committee member, which is, if you imagine, for people who don't have children in the schools, what their relationship is with the school district. Certainly, they see those big yellow buses, and, you know, they have to stop for those, and there's the votes for budget, but other than that, it really may be that their only interaction with the school district is when they happen to be scrolling through cable television and they see a school committee meeting. If that is their impression of the school district, what is it, what is the face that they're seeing? What are you putting forward? And I think that thus the community trust of how is this governance body working together is really something to kind of keep at the forefront of your mind. So that's what I have for you on roles. Before I move on to finance, anything you want to check in on there? Anything, any questions you have? Anything you want me to clarify?
Any questions from any of the members?
As I said, it should be review.
Thank you.
Now, in terms of finance, we, of course, talk a lot, and honestly, I would say kind of fairly casually, about chapter 70 with this sort of notion that everybody knows what we're talking about when we talk about chapter 70. And I always like to define my terms, and I think it's important for folks to know that the way, reason we talk about chapter 70 is that school finance is actually defined in Massachusetts General Law Chapter 70, okay? And I've given you the first section here, which effectively lays out what it is that the legislature, the legislature was attempting to do when they passed Mass General Law Chapter 70 back in 1994. They're doing two things within the school finance system. They're making sure that there's established a foundation budget that's held in common for every child across the state, and they're also, at the same time, coming up with a common way of talking about contribution from local communities. So that's, those are the two things that are going on with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 70. So when we talk about chapter 70, what we're talking about is state funding for education, okay, in K through 12. So the first question, then, that the state had to answer when it went to put this together back in 1994, is what does it actually take in order to educate a child? And what the state did was it really made a list, effectively, of what it takes in order to educate a child in Massachusetts. And that has, you know, if we all sat around and brainstormed, we'd probably come up with much of this list. The first thing everyone always thinks of is teachers, as well, they should, but it does include things like making sure that you have utilities, and that you have a building, and that you have administration, and that you have a principal, and that you have support staff, that your staff actually has health insurance and so forth. Doesn't include everything, doesn't include building rentals, doesn't include transportation is the big one, doesn't include crossing guards, but those things together are what's called, then, the base foundation amount. There's one that's established for half-day preschool, half-day kindergarten, full-day kindergarten, elementary school, middle school, high school, and vocational school. And so that, that number is established every year as part of the state budget process, that base foundation amount is what's established. So this is what they look like for FY '23, which is, as you know, is the current fiscal year. Probably not necessarily a lot of surprises there. Obviously vocational is due to the small class sizes, and also to, due to the equipment needs of those programs. This rate is always subject to the inflation rate as part of the budget process. There's a, there's an inflation rate that's established every year. It's not the inflation rate, we'll talk more about this in a second, that we really see in anything else. This does, though, include all of those pieces that we just mentioned. Two that I want to pull out for you for, that are changing at this point. One is the guidance and psychological services has been going up a bit as part of the implementation of the Student Opportunity Act. I think we all can agree that it couldn't be more timely in terms of the needs of our districts. And the other thing that's been going up, that has a different way of being implemented now is health insurance. Health insurance, again, preaching to the choir here, you know, is one of the biggest cost drivers of school budgets at this point, and the inflation rate that applies to the rest of the budget is not the inflation rate for health insurance at this point, and I'll talk more about that in a second, but do know that those are part of what's actually sort of inside each of these. So to that base foundation amount, the state adds two additional increments, one for English learners and one for low-income students. So in FY '23, these are the increments that are added on top of that for low incomes, for English language learners. Now, I do want to mention, these are, as part of the Student Opportunity Act, heading upward. There is an end rate that they are getting to, however, that end rate is going to be inflated by the inflation over the course of the six years of the implementation. So what was passed, what was signed into law by Governor Baker in November of 2019 is not the dollar amount we're going to end up with, because it will have, that dollar amount will have gone through the inflation rate of all of the interceding years. The other thing that I want to mention is that this is heading to rates where the grades nine through 12 will be the largest amount, which I think probably won't surprise any of you in terms of which are the students that we probably need to be spending the most amount on, if, in fact, the end goal here is English fluency. Don't quite have as much time with those students, and we also know that in some cases, it can be a little more challenging to be, to be acquiring and fluent in a language as you get older. So originally, there was only a single rate, which was kind of based on an assumption in '93 that most kids who were learning to speak English were coming to us as kindergartners. By the time they got to the middle of elementary school or so, they probably were hanging out with the rest of the other kids for all of their schooling. We know that, of course, is not the case. We get kids who are learning English at every grade level, and this is designed to ensure that they're supported along the way. And then the low-income rate underwent a pretty significant revolution as part of the Student Opportunity Act. We used to have 10 deciles, and they were divided evenly. These are no longer divided evenly. This is internal percentages in terms of the percentage of students in your district that are considered low income. I always go back and forth. Sometimes I think I ought to actually add all the percentages, but then you'd end up with a really busy chart. So the one that actually applies to you is the ninth decile, pretty high concentration of low-income students in your district. These numbers are also heading towards target rates at the end of the six-year implementation of the Student Opportunity Act. Again, they were included in the 2019 bill. They also, though, are going through the inflation rate every year, so the place we were going in 2019 is a different place than we're going to end up, will end up in a place where it's higher. I do want to mention, though, that at the end of the implementation, the 12th division here will be equal to the middle school rate for the base foundational rate. In other words, the intention of the state is that a student who is low income in the highest concentration of low-income district will have effectively twice as much being spent on them or being available to them, at least from a foundation budget perspective, we all know that's not all that's spent, as just simply a student who actually isn't low income in another district, okay? So that was the intent. Again, it's a recognition of need. And then in terms of special education, we do have a change going on here in terms of how the state measures in-district special education. This was pretty hotly debated during the Foundation Budget Review Commission, as you might imagine. As you might be familiar, the foundation budget does not recognize actual special education count. It actually imposes a flat percentage. So the assumption from the state is that 1% of your student body is in full-time out-of-district special education services, and that at this point, 3.86% of your students are in the equivalent of full-time. So realize that most of your in-district special education services are done part-time, students are spending time in mainstream classrooms, to 3.86%. The bottom number is heading for 4% at the end of the implementation of the Student Opportunity Act, except for regional vocational districts, which, which is headed for 5%. Now, I always tell you that part first, and then I add a note on this part, too, because these are the highest numbers you're about to see. For in-district special education, it's currently over $29,000. For out-of-district special education, it's over $34,000, but of course, it's not actually the real number of students that you have in special education. So take that as you will. Now, I always like to show school committees the inflation rate, in part because it's kind of amazing how much it has bobbed around. I've been involved in school committee work for 12 years, and that means that I, yes, did actually have the distinction of starting in FY 11. That was not fun. But the, I think it's important to note that, first of all, this is not the inflation rate that all of us are seeing headlines about. The general ways that inflation is measured, that makes newspaper headlines, that has the Federal Reserve talking and all the rest of it, is not the inflation rate that the foundation budget uses. The foundation budget uses a measurement, it's called the implicit price deflator for state and local governments. What it does is it measures actual spending by local governments and state governments, and the one, the percentage that the state takes for this is the amount of change in the third quarter of the prior fiscal year. Now, what does that end up meaning? First of all, it means that it often doesn't necessarily track with general inflation. What it really tracks with, and this was by design, is how much local districts are actually spending, and how much local state governments are spending, and how much local cities are spending. So that's the first part. The second part, however, which came into play this year, is the Student Opportunity Act actually caps the inflation rate at 4.5%. And if in FY 2023, it had actually been the inflation rate, it would have been a 5.9% inflation rate, not a 4.5% inflation rate. The other thing is, as I noted, the health insurance has its own inflation rate now, and that is interesting and meaningful, except in FY '23, it was 4.51%, which, of course, is almost exactly what the inflation rate is for everything else. So I do put it in a note because I think it's important for you to know that there are two, but it didn't really make that much of a difference this year. And then if you put the pieces together, the first thing, of course, you're going to do is do the base foundation calculations. You multiply those by the number of students you have in each of those grade levels. So how many kindergartners do you have? How many elementary school students do you have, and so forth? You're going to do the same thing with the English language learner increment. How many students do you have in each of those divisions in terms of English language learners? Likewise, in terms of the low-income increment, how many students do you have that count as low income? Would that ninth section multiply? And then the special education percentage is on the top, and that together is going to give you a foundation budget. Every district in the state has a spreadsheet that looks like this, on the state's website. I never start here because it can be a little intimidating to look at, but what you just walked through is this. An easier way of looking at it is this. What I did was just pull out the numbers that actually kind of matter in terms of, here's your enrollment, here's the per pupil amount, and here's the multiplication. I did drop all the ones that don't have any students in them, and it didn't bring my italics through again, dang it. That seems to keep happening. Special education in district and everything below that, remember, those students actually are already counted. So make sure that when you go to total enrollment, don't add that full column, because every student who's below special education in district already shows up in the previous rows. So at the end of the day here, the idea is for an adequate minimum to get the Oxford Public Schools to $21 million. That's, again, what the state's doing. Now, remember, at the same time, the state also, by virtue of having passed the Student Opportunity Act, has acknowledged that their fair and adequate minimum, in fact, is not actually adequate, right? So we're in this six-year journey for the Student Opportunity Act implementation for a reason, and it's because everyone acknowledges that the foundation budget wasn't enough. So I wanted to give you a couple of numbers that you are no doubt familiar with, but maybe haven't seen in exactly this context. Remember that at ground, the foundation budget is a, is a pupil-driven funding formula, right? It's about the number of kids that you have, and then about the needs of those kids. So I always think it's important to actually look at enrollment, because not just your current enrollment, but your enrollment over time is part of what's actually driving this calculation. And if you haven't, you know, again, I've been around school committees for 12 years or so, have I sort of thought back over a decade, what does that end up looking like? That's an important thing to actually be sort of keeping an eye on, because whether or not you sort of necessarily have at the forefront of your mind what your foundation budget is, your foundation budget is the first step in the calculation as to how you end up with the state aid that you do. And so the number of students that you have and what grade they're in and what their needs are, then is part of what drives the rest of this equation. So obviously, I don't need to tell you this, obviously, you've had declining enrollment over the next, over the past number of years, and, you know, that's, that's a fairly significant drop-off over time. Just from a very sort of straightforward calculation perspective, it makes a difference when you have 500 fewer kids, okay? So that, that's one thing to start with. The other thing that I always think is important to look at is where you're at with your selected populations. So the first one that's on here is your low-income students. Now, do keep in mind, we've actually changed how we count low-income students as part of what's gone over the last couple of years. However, regardless of that, you've had some significant growth in the number of low-income students that you're serving. So you no doubt have already felt this in terms of what that has meant in terms of the needs of the students that you're serving, right? That obviously has an impact on your budget. It obviously has an impact really on everything that you do, but realize that it also is going to have an impact on your foundation budget, because the number of low-income students that you serve is part of the calculation that feeds into what exactly it is that the state is considering an adequate minimum. There's a couple of other things I want to mention in here. Your English learner population largely was sort of staying almost exactly level. It did sort of jump up a bit. Now, and I'm going to actually do something unusual and forefront the fact that I'm saying this not just as your field director, but also as a member of the Worcester School Committee. Worcester actually has about a third of our kids in English language learner. We serve a population in which something like 60-something percent of our kids speak a first language other than English. In my personal perspective, it's much more challenging for a district like Oxford to go from 0.5% to 1.9% English learner than it is for Worcester to be bobbing around around 33, 34, 36%, okay? This is part of what we do. Daily, you, meanwhile, are saying, okay, well, we had two kids in kindergarten, but now we've got a kid in seventh grade and a kid in ninth grade, and how do you serve that, that population, right? That's a much more challenging thing to do, both from a staffing perspective and from a budgetary perspective. So that, those kinds of little bounces at the bottom, as much as they look little, obviously have an impact in terms of the kinds of decisions that you're needing to make. And then, as much as, do I not have disabilities? There we go. As much as the actual disabilities count, the actual sort of IEPs is not actually what drives your foundation budget, obviously, it drives your spending. And so you have had, you did have some sort of kind of level years there in terms of 15% or so forth, but jumping up almost to 20% in the last year. So again, that obviously has an impact in terms of what you need for staffing, what you need for, for what kinds of services you're doing, the kinds of decisions you're making of in-district special education, out-of-district special education, what your tuition looks like, what your transportation looks like, all of those kinds of things. Now, remember, those are the numbers that are going to drive your foundation budget. This is actually what your foundation budget has done over the last number of years. And because it is your foundation budget, notice the way that it's kind of bobbed around, right? Some of this is enrollment-driven. If you have a drop in the total number of students, the drop, the foundation budget overall is going to be dropping at least from that part of it, but if at the same time, you're gaining low-income students, or you have a population that's growing there, that potentially is going to push your, that's going to push your foundation budget up. So you've had a couple of different sort of things, pressures, effectively, on your foundation budget over the last number of years. We'll come back to this chart again because it ends up being telling in some other ways. So, whoops, I didn't change the terminology on this one, but effectively, the question here is how are you going to get there, right? Where, how are we going to get to the $21 million? So a percentage, a calculation that I always heard, but never saw written down until we got to the Student Opportunity Act, is this one, which is that if you take the whole foundation budget for the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts, underlying the part that happens next is an understanding, which now is written in the Student Opportunity Act, but previously was not written anywhere, that 59% of that total foundation budget is going to come from local communities, it's going to come from cities and towns, and 41% of it is going to come from the state. That's how the state is going to fund the total foundation budget for all K through 12 education in Massachusetts annually. So how does it get there? Well, it starts by looking at two things. It starts by looking at the equalized valuation. Now, it's going to do this at the state level, it looks at the equalized valuation for all taxable property in every community in the entire Commonwealth, and it comes up with a giant total, okay? And then at the same time, it's going to look at the income from the State Department of Revenue filings, again, for the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Now, what it does, and I'm going to explain this, it's easily the most complicated thing that I explain, there will not be a quiz, but I think it's good for people to have at least been walked through it once. The state takes each of those two numbers. It takes the statewide income total, the statewide equalized property total, and it figures out how to set them equal. So you may remember, and maybe some of you actually even use this math, that when you learn decimals, you could make numbers go up by multiplying by numbers greater than one, and you could make numbers go down by multiplying by numbers less than one. That's what the state does. It sets those two numbers equal to each other, and it comes up with two different decimals, and we're going to walk away from this calculation with nothing other than those two decimals, because what they're going to do then is they're going to take those two decimals that set those two numbers equal, and they're going to apply them to every town in Massachusetts. So we have this income decimal, and we have this property value decimal, and it's going to apply each of those decimals to Oxford, and to Worcester, and to Province Town, and to Great Barrington. And that's their standard local funding effort calculation. That's how they do it. That's how they, that's how they actually take Boston, and they compare it to Great Barrington, and they compare that to, you know, and they compare it to Great Barrington, and they compare that to, you know, every district in the state. So then, what essentially the state is attempting to do at that point is come up with a way of saying, okay, so Oxford, you've gotta come up with twenty-one million dollars. How much can the town of Oxford actually afford of that twenty-one million dollars? And that's the combined effort yield. So it's gonna take the local property valuation, the town of Oxford, and it's gonna multiply it by that percentage as we just pulled out of the state calculation. It's gonna do the same thing with the income. It's gonna take the local income taxes that are paid from this municipality, multiply it by that percentage. And it adds, and then at the end of it, it adds those two numbers together. So for every town, okay, it takes the local, the local property, multiplies it by the decimal and gives the local effort from property wealth, and then it does the same thing with that decimal that came from the income wealth, local effort from income wealth. As I said, this is the most complicated thing we do. That together is gonna give you the combined effort yield. I like the combined effort yield because it is actually a way of saying, okay, so we've got these districts that are, these towns that are wildly different from each other. Everybody kind of has a sense of how much money everybody has, but it's not necessarily always based on anything real. You can actually then take the standard calculation and say, okay, well, this town can afford to spend this much, this town can afford to spend this much. And if you take that and you compare it to a district's foundation budget, you then have a way of saying, okay, well, given the needs of the district, the needs of the schools, this is the amount that this town can afford to spend of that. And you can actually come up with a percentage that allows you to compare those across districts. And that's just the local, the standard local funding effort. That's, I'm just quoting here from Mass General law chapter seventy. So the required local contribution for every town, what the state does next is it says, okay, we are gonna make sure that everybody gets some state funding, regardless of their ability. Because there's obviously gonna be towns that are gonna come back with a combined effort yield that's well in excess of their local school foundation budget. But the way that they're gonna work this out is that everybody's gonna get at least seventeen point five percent of their foundation budget in state aid, okay? Everybody gets chapter seventy-eight. So that's why they compare it against eighty-two point five, because that's in the law. It says, everybody's gonna get some. We could talk about the fairness or the equity of that later, but everybody does. And that's what's going on with that comparison. They do also look at how much the town was required to contribute the year before, okay? So this is not coming in out of anywhere. This, by the way, does actually matter. You're one of the districts where this comparison actually ends up being the part that gains traction. They also then look at how much your economy grew in the last year. So there's actually a local municipal calculation in terms of that. And they take the last year's contribution and multiply it by that percentage of economic growth, and that comes up with your initial contribution. They are gonna then compare it to the earlier calculation. How close are you to your target? The comparison they did at the bottom in terms of the eighty-two point five percent or the combined effort yield, that one of those is your target, whichever one is less. In your case, it's the combined effort yield. And then they're gonna do a little bit of calculating to either bring you up or down to make sure that you're getting closer to the target over time, is the intention anyway. So this is your calculation for FY twenty-three, okay? Won't read this line by line, but if you look on the left-hand side, you see the town's equalized valuation. It's a couple of years old to make sure that you can do some sorting out of property taxes or income taxes. There's that uniform property percentage, the point three six two four. There's the local effort from property wealth, and then we do the same thing for income. Combined effort yield is twelve million, five hundred sixteen thousand, one hundred ninety-two. And then we compare that to your, to eighty-two point five percent of your foundation budget. Your target local share, so the state's saying, how much can Oxford afford to contribute to that twenty-one million dollars we said you were heading towards, is fifty-two point seven nine, okay? Do want to mention, by the way, the FY foundation budget line eight here, you'll see, is not the twenty-one that I gave you. And this is the town's foundation budget, and the town, of course, also has to support regional votacs. So that's why their foundation budget is different than the Oxford Public Schools' foundation budget. This right-hand side is doing that calculation that we talked about in terms of how much was your, how much was the town's contribution last year? The municipal revenue growth factor, how much did the local economy grow last year? Four point zero one percent. That's the calculation that then brings you a preliminary contribution of eleven point eight million. Now, that's only forty-eight percent. So that, they're then gonna do this next little bit to try to push you up a bit closer to that fifty-two point seven nine that was your target. And that's what's going on here at the bottom, which gives you, and they bolded on purpose, line twenty-six, which is your required local contribution, the town's required local contribution to education. So again, this is partly going to be you, but partly also the regional votac, is eleven point nine million dollars. As I said, not a quiz on that. But this is the comparison in terms of the combined effort yield versus your required local contribution, okay? A little bit different. Now, how do we get you still to the twenty-one million dollars, right? So the state is always going to start by saying, well, what's the local contribution? Now, we're going back to how much of this actually comes to the Oxford Public Schools, so. We always start with the local, required local contribution. Required local contribution of ten point five, of ten point five million dollars. And the state fills in the gap, the orange line here is your foundation budget, between your local required contribution and your foundation budget with chapter seventy-eight. So that's how you get your chapter seventy-eight number. It comes first from the foundation budget calculation, but then this calculation of how much can the town afford to spend towards that required minimum, okay? Now, as always, and you all know this, that's the local required minimum. Nearly every town in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts spends more than their required minimum. It has been virtually required effectively to make school budgets actually work, particularly over the last number of years when we were kind of facing this crunch, this crunch point with the state in terms of the funding of the implementation of the Student Opportunity Act.
Could I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So you, you would alluded to earlier that fifty-nine percent was local and forty-one state?
At the state level.
At the state level.
At the state level. So in terms of how much for district by district, there are districts in which the foundation budget is eighty-two point five percent local funded, right? That's the cap, with seventeen point five coming from the state. There are districts in which it is virtually the reverse. So the poorest districts in the state, or I should say, the districts in the poorest communities in the state are certainly getting more than half of their budget from the state.
All right, so we're like fifty-fifty?
You're pretty, yes, yeah. Yeah, which, which, the, your districts, and I, I don't know, this, this sounds very sort of esoteric of me, but are actually end up being some of the more fascinating ones to look at in terms of then what happens if we, when we're doing things like the Student Opportunity Act? Because the answer isn't as straightforward as it is like, holy oak, what's gonna happen? Your foundation budget goes up, the state picks up more of the bill. What happens if the foundation budget goes up in a district where they're seventeen point five percent? I mean, they probably haven't even noticed the Student Opportunity Act, to be frank with you, right? It doesn't make any difference to them. So you're really, I mean, you are asking these questions at exactly the right time because this is actually really just where you're at. Which is why I said, but wait, there's more. Because you all are in a really interesting position in terms of the implementation of the Student Opportunity Act. So remember the foundation budget history, right? The foundation budget bobs up and down. Now, if all that we did was just what I talked about, and we didn't do anything else, your state aid naturally would go up and down, right? Like, because your foundation budget went up and down, then they do the calculation. Well, your foundation budget goes down enough, the state's gonna give you less aid, okay? You may have noticed that while you may not have liked the increases you were getting, that's not something that ever happened, okay? And the reason is because previous to the Student Opportunity Act and now written into the Student Opportunity Act have been two things. The first thing is, so once you do the required local contribution and you do the foundation aid, the thing that this, that's actually not the way that that line should work, sorry about that. My chart's gonna be wrong. The thing that the state always looks at is, compared to last year, how much state aid would you be getting based on this calculation? And if you would be getting less, the state holds you to the same level, okay? So that's called hold harmless. Let's see what this does, okay? My orange line should be actually at the top of the blue, so I'm sorry about that. The state is never going to give you less state aid than you got the year before, okay? That's called hold harmless aid. And currently written, now written to the Student Opportunity Act, previously as a result of what effectively was annual wrangling in the legislative process, the state also ensures that you always get an increase of thirty dollars per pupil, okay? And so this is your FY twenty-three number. Again, remember, the orange should actually be just under the purple. So those two things always ensure that you're not going backwards in terms of state aid. You're not getting less state aid, and you're always getting a little bit more. Now, that is as it is. Now, what the state's gonna do when it gives this to you is it's gonna say, okay, well, you're, you have been required to spend the fullness of your foundation budget, is generally sort of the standard, right? You got us, the town has to give you X, we're gonna give you Y. Those two things together have to be spent on schools. If the state's also now gonna kick in a little bit more, they're then gonna say, and you also have to spend that on schools, okay? Don't go pave a sidewalk with that, that has to go to your schools too. That's called net school spending. If the state's giving you more than your foundation budget, that means that you end up with a net school spending percentage that's over a hundred, right? You have, you're spending your foundation budget, plus you're spending this additional state aid that you're getting through hold harmless and minimum increases. Now, that is, first of all, not uncommon. These are the FY twenty-three, it's not all of them, but it's most of the communities. And this is more for illustration than anything else. You probably can't read it, but I'll give you the slide so you can look at it. Let me note two things. There are significantly fewer than when I did this chart last year. We'll talk about why in a second. And this also doesn't include Boston, because Boston totally throws off my chart when I do this. Boston gets, Boston's getting thirty-three million dollars in hold harmless and minimum aid. And when I put that on there, you can't see anybody else in the chart, so. I just always wanna make sure I put that there. So you're not unusual in terms of this. And you also are not unusual in terms of this, in terms of the next thing that I'm going to show you, which is this. This came from your chapter seventy spreadsheet, same place I showed you the charts from earlier, okay? Please note what the blue line is doing, okay? Because you are in the group of communities where the foundation budget increasing is effectively eating through that hold harmless and minimum aid, okay? Which means that, because all you were getting was the thirty dollars per pupil, thirty dollars per pupil, thirty dollars per pupil. The foundation budget has increased enough where what has happened to you here is that you're just at the cusp of actually breaking out of the hold harmless and minimum aid increases. And this is always the chart that I pull. So note what happened here, which is that in FY twenty-two, you were at a hundred and ten percent of required net school spending. That was another, in other words, you were getting almost eleven percent more than your foundation budget in state aid that you were required to hold. But it was still only gonna be that thirty dollars per pupil additional, like, that's all it was. The foundation budget has increased enough. I mean, look, your foundation budget went from eighteen point six million dollars last year to twenty-one million this year. That this year, your required net school spending is only a hundred and one. You're in the ninth group in terms of the low-income students, and that's really where the, that's really where the increases are coming in terms of the foundation budget. I, I think that you're gonna break out of hold harmless and minimum aid increases next year because we're only in year two of the implementation of the Student Opportunity Act. You've got four more years to go. I, the, with this kind of, of, I mean, the direction of that blue line and these kinds of increases and the fact that your district is in the ninth group in terms of the number of low-income students you have, I think you're actually gonna see real increases next year in state aid. So I don't know that anyone has told you that. I think it's actually a really valuable thing for you to know. I'm not qualified to tell you what that's gonna look like. It totally depends on your enrollment, totally depends on a number of other things, like inflation and so forth. But I do think it's important for you to have an idea that if you've been sitting here thinking, we did all that fight about the Student Opportunity Act and then nothing happened, that's because of where you were relative to your hold harmless and minimum aid increases. You, the, what has been happening is that you have actually been seeing progress in terms of this, but it's been only in your foundation budget. Your foundation budget's increasing enough, and again, to your point, in terms of where, where does this fall? Where does the increase come from? At least part of it is actually gonna come from the state because you are a fifty-fifty community. And I'm happy, that's the last present, that's the last slide I have for you, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions, anybody?
I do have questions. I thought we would get a little bit of a presentation too on understanding of other parts of the budget in addition to like the state.
What would you like to know about? Because I didn't bring any slides on that, but I'm happy, certainly happy to talk to you about anything.
That's okay. I know that I, I reached out to you, I left a message, I went through the chair as well. I know a lot of communities get an annual presentation, and we just got a brief annual presentation, one of our first that I can remember in a long time, about our revolving funds, for example.
Yep.
And understanding how those programs work and understanding how that money, we kind of got a cursory overview. But I think it's important to see, how are we spending that money? Do programs have to shift? I know like lunch right now, thanks be to God, like, we don't have to worry, like we used to have to worry in years past. But there's so many things there that I don't, I don't really think that, as a member here, just speaking for myself, that I do do justice to look into and see how it's operating and if we're spending funds, you know, for those programs, you know, to the best of our ability. And I know that last year, we discussed possibility of having a preschool program. And I think, okay, that's another potential revolving fund. And, you know, we're blessed to have programs like our full-day kindergarten and things like that, and that had to be built from ground up at one point. So I guess, I haven't heard any discussion from the superintendent this year so far about that or, you know, the committee as a whole, but I'm wondering, you know, what would we have to do to get certain things like that off the ground?
So.
Tracy, could you just say, because I respect my colleague's statement, but I'm not sure where the question was, so I guess I will ask you a direct question. What is our, as school committee members, what is our involvement with revolving accounts?
Yeah, so revolving funds, because they're, so there's, the state actually has a chart on the DOR website that actually has the whole list of revolving funds because just about every revolving fund that we, no, every revolving fund that we run exists in a separate Massachusetts general law chapter. I would argue that they are among the most heavily regulated lines of revenue that we have. And thus, the school committee level of oversight on that frankly is minimal. I think that we can really easily get sucked into, to take a slight sort of sidetrack, which will bring me back to the main point again. I was recently introduced to the concept of bike shedding.
Say that again?
Which, to bike shedding. Which is that if you have a group of people that are, that are making a series of decisions and you have a big decision and you have a little decision, we oftentimes will focus on sort of the somewhat small decision rather than the big decision, right? So as a school committee, you pass a school budget that literally is millions and millions of dollars. Probably your largest line item is your teacher's salaries. I'm willing to bet that you probably spend more time talking about other accounts rather than your teacher's salary. Now, that's partly because you negotiate that, but also, it really is the biggest part of your account. And I do think that revolving funds can easily be that sort of bike shedding. By the way, the metaphor is that you focus on the bike shed rather than the large building, right? Revolving funds already are very, very heavily regulated in terms of who can spend them, how they can be spent, where they can go. With the exception really of school choice, most of our revolving funds effectively really can't go anywhere other than back into the program that they came from, right? They have, the school nutrition has to go back to school nutrition, preschool has to go back to preschool, kindergarten, like, and so forth. I saw you had, you know, your athletic, if that's not run by the booster club, it's run by the school, that money has to go back into the same place. So should you have an idea of what they are? Yes. Should you have an idea of how much money they're running? Yes. Other than that, and the sort of authorization for them to spend them within those areas, there really isn't a lot more for the school committee to do. And that's not to say that there isn't fiduciary oversight, but obviously you're actually exercising that in other ways anyway because you sign warrants, you're doing quarterly reports and so forth. I would say that in terms of, you know, what are the things outside the budget that school committees should particularly be keeping their eye on right now as their funding? First of all, everybody knows it's the largest chunk of federal money that's come to school districts since, you know, since LBJ. It has really strict deadlines, right? We just passed the first one. All of it is supposed to be gone, be gone by September of twenty twenty-four. The state's been keeping a really Um, the state's been keeping a really close eye on this. I actually just went through my own district's audit last week, and he mentioned that the, the, the federal government's audit guidelines is that they're considering S R funding quote-unquote high risk, which effectively means that they have to watch it. Um, you should know how it's being spent, you should know, be able to talk about it. Um, keeping an eye on that. I, again, don't know of any superintendent and any business office that doesn't feel similarly in terms of, you know, they, they're watching that. But I do think that from a sort of public transparency perspective of this has been a lot of money and people want us to be upfront about it, um, I do think that's probably a thing to be saying, you know, here's where that is, here's where it's gone, here's what we're seeing.
Yeah.
That's what I would say.
And I know we've asked for presentations, and I'm sure they're coming.
Right, and I think that, I mean, that's also one of terms of, um, questions of like, how does that interact with your general fund budget, right? It, are you, are you adding things that you're gonna need to pick up later? Um, is it that, is the timing such that you're potentially doing after-school or summer programming? You know, the, the cycles of the year can certainly flow into that too. Yep, good question.
Thank you for that explanation.
So, when I reviewed Worcester, for example, cause I know you're on that committee out that way.
Yes.
Um, I saw that you have a lot of budget policies that we just don't have or we're lacking, and I know you have another committee that kind of works overseeing the budget all the time outside of, you know, the regular, it's like a subcommittee essentially, where you're reviewing everything all the time, I would imagine.
Mm-hmm.
Um, do you have any?
Quarterly.
It's quarterly?
Yes.
So do you have any guidance for other committees as far as like a framework? And how did you decide in Worcester to adopt that? I mean, I know you're a much larger district, you have so much more to probably look at. But I imagine it came from a good place.
I mean, quarterly budget reporting is sort of, it's considered a managerial best practice. It's not, it, you know, not only predates me and is, is outside of Worcester, it, it extends beyond that. Um, so, I mean, the, the fiscal year falls into four quarters. Um, the school committee, um, first of all, of course, has the, the budget oversight responsibility, but also, as you probably know, um, under DOR, um, decision is required to be the transfer authority. So in other words, if there's money that's going from one cost center to another, it has to come through the committee. Um, the, doing those two things at the same time makes some sense, right? That, you know, you're, you may or may not move money in the first quarter. You just got here, we only have had a couple of payrolls, but you can have some sense of what's going on by the end of the first quarter, um, for some things. By the end of the second quarter, if there's particular things that need to happen, that maybe the budget office is saying, we're seeing a vacancy factor over here, but dollars to doughnuts, like, everyone's gonna need to be moving money into utilities this winter, right, probably? Nobody was budgeting for what we're gonna end up facing. Um, you know, that's gonna need to come through the school committee, there may be a home for that. Um, I will say that, you know, again, you're a smaller committee, so sometimes committees like to do their budget stuff as committees as a whole, rather than that. That's really entirely up to you and the administration in terms of how that works best. Um, but yes, the, the notion of a quarterly report that has, um, not only spending to date, um, and with the amount of money that's encumbered still, but also some notion of projections, right? So this is the time where people are starting to say, we are thinking that natural gas is going to be X, Y, and Z, and we need to be, start planning for that. I know I just saw head, new headlines about National Grid earlier this afternoon, so electricity too, probably. Um, but similar kinds of things, right? In terms of that, in terms of where is your substitute coverage? Um, what are you seeing in terms of, by the time we get to third quarter, what are we seeing for snow removal? Those kinds of things.
So those are things that, if I could interject, those are things that we get.
Yes.
We get monthly reports, we get kind of an update from the business manager where he's foreseeing potential areas where we might have to, again, appropriate money to, to change line items. I think what Mrs. Griffin was trying to say, and I guess the question would be to you, should a district this size have a budget and finance subcommittee? Cause I think that's what she's referring to. Now, I know your district does, I work for the Wachusett Regional School District, I know we have a
Yep.
a budget and finance subcommittee. Is there a need at, at this size of a district? Cause I think that's what she's alluding to.
Um, it, it's up to the committee. And up, and honestly, it's also up to the administration, right? Because, um, I, I think, and this is ju- uh, this is true not only of sort of budget and finance subcommittees, it's true honestly of any subcommittee. Um, the main thing is, is the committee effectively getting the work done that needs to be done? Um, and both in terms of their own opinion and also in terms of administration's opinion, right? That goes back to that sort of roles thing of you actually do owe it to your administration to make sure that the school committee is doing the work that the administration needs you to do. Um, I think sometimes we can forget that part. Um, so that's why when I get into, you know, particularly, sometimes there are committees that will, um, will do their warrant signing through subcommittees, and I'll say, well, that's fine. You just, you make sure that whatever is happening there, people are able to pay the bills, right? And so the same thing here is, are you able as a committee to have the conversation that you need to? Does administration feel that they're able to have the conversation that they need to? Do they have the time that they need to, to devote to that? Um, I mean, there, the truism in MASC is that the work of the committee is done in subcommittee, but that is frequently both in terms of, we have school committees that meet for three, four-hour meetings. Um, maybe that's not the most effective place for there to be work happening. Al- also, of course, I don't need to tell you this, Wachusett has a committee of twenty-two, right? Is that really the best place for them to have a conversation about budget and finance every month? Probably not. Um, so, I mean, tha- that's actually part of that too, is that, um, sometimes, MASC frequently will get the, how many subcommittees are we supposed to have and what should they be? And the answer really is, it depends. What's the work that you're trying to get done? And is it getting done, um, in the way that it needs to get done? Because really, that's why you have subcommittees.
Thank you.
Yep.
You have more?
No, I appreciate that, cause like hearing that gives me some peace. You know, we don't, I personally don't wanna, you know, drop a ball. And I look at what everybody else does, kinda, and I'm saying, hmm, I wonder, is that something that we're supposed to have? Cause it seems like everybody else is doing it.
No, there's no, and I, I appreciate the question. Um, there, there's no magic to that. I mean, certainly, you know, there are reasons why people have polit- why committees will have policy subcommittees, we have to do, you know, we're gonna sit here and we're gonna wrangle over what exactly the words are.
Right.
If, if you're the kind of committee where you've got a couple of members who that's gonna drive bananas, don't put them on the policy subcommittee. Like, let the people who like word wrangling go off and do the word wrangling and bring it back to the rest of the committee. Um, similarly, in terms of any of that kind of work. Um, and, I mean, also, I will say that we have school committees where I think they can sometimes get outside of their purview in their eagerness to have particular kinds of subcommittees, and that's always a danger too, of sort of pulling you back into. So what is it you're planning on doing there? Are you just getting together to get together, or, you know, is this actually forwarding the work in the district?
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I guess I just have one regarding, um, finance. Could you give us just your quick opinion on school choice? How does school choice affect a budget?
So it, the main thing that I always, um, wanna make sure school committees know is that, um, it is a volatile line of revenue. So, a- as much as you can, don't depend on it. Because the kid is here this year, that doesn't mean they're coming next year. Um, and it, it, remember that the state designed it to be, you already had that seat and it was gonna be sitting in a classroom where it was just sitting there, not you're creating things in order to suit it. Um, the, the place where I get worried is when I see, um, school districts effectively depending on school choice to balance their books, um, because you don't know what's gonna happen next year.
Right, but it wouldn't certainly be a dependence, but when you're losing a hundred and twenty kids a year to school choice, you know, you're certainly not looking to offset that loss, cause you're never going to. So it's not gonna become dependable.
Yes.
But it certainly makes sense to, you know, get something back at some point.
So I'm actually, I'm, I'm describing the wrong half of the equation. So in terms of, of students choicing out, um, I mean, first of all, it's much like we were talking about with English learners, it's never a neat issue, right? You're never gonna be able to just close a third grade, cause that's never the way the math works. Um, it, the, the, sort of, the other side of it is that at least with school choice, it isn't the full amount of the student, right? So there's that. Um, but yeah, I mean, I think that it's always a conversation worth having as a district of, um, do you have a sense of why people are making the choices they are? And is there anything that you can do about it? Um, you know, I, I don't, don't spend all your time chasing after that, right? You have lots of children that you serve and lots of families that are here and are happy and so forth. Um, but if it, first of all, if it's a financial thing, but also, there's sort of a community question there too, right? These are your schools, the town, um, supports them. And, um, you know, are there necessarily easy fixes? But are there things that people are looking for that you could actually do? Um, I think, I think that's always a, a worthy school committee conversation.
Yeah, no, I agree. Well, thank you. Is there anything else from anybody? Well, thank you very much for coming out, Tracy.
Oh, sure, I was glad to.
Appreciate it, thanks a lot.
And also, I will say, by the way, that every time I pull up that last slide and I see the line go like this, I was like, it's another one.
Did you mention that you would be able to share load that?
Yes.
We'll also share with the super, uh, Helen.
That'd be great.
Here, so why don't I do this? This is actually, I'll just tell you, this has another presentation from Munson from, I think, two years ago, but take the thumb drive. God bless you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, awesome, thank you.
Yeah, just realized, there's one place where it says Nauset Regional, and I just ignored that. That was the last time I did this.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Good luck with the new garden going.
Thank you.
It's gonna be awesome.
Well, I mean, we came through the fire already, so.
It's gonna be awesome.
Thank you, Tracy. Um, so at this point, we are gonna go to executive session. So pursuant to MGL, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One-A, Subsection Two, to discuss strategy and preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and/or contract negotiations with non-union personnel interim school business administrator and director of operations, as is necessary to protect the position of the public body, the committee will exit executive session and adjourn the public meeting without conducting any further business. So we do need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion to go to executive session.
A motion, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second, any discussion? Call for the vote, Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
And I'm a yes for, yes, one absent, uh, we are now in executive session. Thank you.